All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment's stop.
(Inaudible)
All right, first up is to amend the agenda, and I actually want to move to amend the agenda just to include the dates of 10/1/25 and 10/13/25 on approving our previous minutes. I would just need a second. Is there any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Ryan?
Aye.
All right. Next is to approve the previous minutes, which were for 10/1/25 and 10/13/25.
I make a motion that we, well, we need, I make a motion that we approve these minutes.
I'll second them.
Is there any discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 The previous minutes have passed. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? All right, we're going to move into new business. First up is discussion item, Chris Burnier Pond Road.
Coming up over here. So, thank you for your evening here to talk about this. I looked at the agenda and I realized we have a fact agenda, so I'll be as concise as I can here. I want to first introduce a few people. I feel like we've stacked the meeting here a little bit. It's a little weird, but, so again, I'm Chris Burnier. I'm a wildlife biologist out of the Springfield District Office, working with Vermont Fish and Wildlife. This is Marie Caduto, one of my colleagues, who is the Watershed Basin Planner for the Department of Environmental Conservation, also out of the Springfield office. Courtney Buckley, here online, is our Fisheries Biologist, Fish and Wildlife, out of the Springfield office. And Courtney, Marie, along with myself and a number of other folks from the agency, all serve on the District Stewardship Team at the Springfield office. That's our district, the District Stewardship Team in Springfield. So, we, that team is an interdisciplinary team that deals with all of our state land management issues. So, we have foresters, we have wildlife specialists, we have watershed specialists, wetlands, fisheries, recreation folks, administration, so on and so forth. There's a really big team that grapples with all of our state lands issues, and that'll come into play here in a little bit. But also online is Andrew Hoak. Here, he is the Director of Environmental Services Division for DuBois and King, and he's the principal engineer and his team of engineers that we've been working with related to the prison pond of late. Actually, DuBois and King has a long history at this pond, working prior to Fish and Wildlife with Buildings and General Services. So, Andrew's here to help us with any questions related to the plans as well. And then we also have Ron Rhodes, who's the Director of Operations for the Connecticut River Conservancy, and he is a primary partner of ours on this project, as well as many others that I've been made aware of of late, through a subrecipient grant with the Connecticut River Conservancy. The Department of Fish and Wildlife works with Ron to be kind of the front of this effort. So, he does all of our grant writing, he does all of the coordinating, the herding the cats, if you will, to help us get all the parts and pieces together for these projects of dam removals, which is what this conversation is about. So, I would just welcome my--
I just joined.
I'm sorry, oh, and Will Eldridge, there you go. He's our aquatic habitat biologist out of the, I think he works out of the Montpelier office, I believe.
What kind of biologist?
Aquatic habitat biologist.
Oh, okay.
So, he and Ron actually work together probably the most in, as far as in Department of Fish and Wildlife and Connecticut River Conservancy, because there's a lot of gains to be had with aquatic habitat when we remove these dams. So, that's Will's focus here, working with Ron. So, I would just welcome my colleagues. I'm going to be as short as I can. There's a few things that I have that I want to get out before we get to the nuts and bolts of the prison pond road, and I welcome my colleagues to join in. If I misspeak, or if there's some detail that you think, you know, would be better served by you saying than me. So, I have three primary objectives. I want to first just debut, this is the first public debut of our decision, the agency's decision to remove the prison pond dam, which I know is kind of a sensitive issue for some individuals. And so, we wanted to give you the kind of the first crack at the inside scoop on what's happening here. And with that, I'd like to give just a really brief history of that pond, so you have some context, and then the rationale behind that decision, and then the next steps.
There's going to be a public outreach meeting coming up?
And that's part of the next steps.
Okay, I just want to get that out early so people know.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. And then I'd like to share with you the, what we call the 60% design plan. So, they're the plans for removal that were prepared by Andrew and his team. They're at 60%, meaning they're not 100% complete by design, by intent. We do a kind of a, it's not a, more than a mock-up, but it's like a partial completion that we bring to the public, and then we get input, and then we then take their input and go back to 100%. And there are some caveats with respect to how we're going to collect input on this particular project. But suffice it to say, 100% design plans are not available yet. They will be soon. And then most significantly, I want to talk, and so we'll spend most of our time with, on this topic, is the Pond Road, because that is a huge part of our access. It is our access, and everything that we do up there is going to be related to Pond Road, including work on the Pond Road itself. So, before we get into that, I just will start by, you know, saying, the decision has been made to remove this dam. It wasn't done lightly, and I hope by the end of this brief conversation, you'll understand the thought and the work that's gone into the decision. But I'd like to just step back, the history here of this pond. It was built in 1925, I think, originally, specifically to serve as the fire prevention water source for the prison facility. So, it was the sprinkler system essentially in all their buildings. It was rebuilt in 1950, so 25 years after. And when I say rebuilt, I'm not sure to what degree, but it was reworked to some level. And again, in 1989, it had some rework or some work done on it. Other than that, it's been pretty much the same with maintenance over the years, and less and less maintenance in the latter part of its life. In 2014, Buildings and General Services, who owned the property and who managed the facility there, got a permit to replace this antiquated and rapidly deteriorating fire prevention system based on the pond. They replaced it with a modern water system, a big tank, wells, something they could rely on and not have to worry about, because the pond was in a state of decay, and it's an antiquated system. So, in 2014, they switched over to that system. In 2017, the Department of Fish and Wildlife acquired 826 acres of the former prison facility, because it closed, you all know that, of course. And after the closure, the bulk of the land surrounding the prison facility was transferred to Fish and Wildlife, including this pond and dam. So, we inherited this pond and dam in its current condition, which is poor, to say the least. So, that being the backdrop, we are now the stewards of this pond, and we have to make a decision. And we've done that, we'll take it out. And here are the key points to remember why we arrived at this decision. So, the, I think it's fair to say that all of the departments of the Agency of Natural Resources, Department of Environmental Conservation, Forest Parks and Recreation, Fish and Wildlife, all share the simple objective of being good stewards of the environment. That is kind of our core mission. And as part of that, removal of dams is also a shared goal amongst all three of our departments. And for all the benefits that we derive from that. So, there are water, you know, quality benefits for, like, example, temperature, which, you know, we don't think of water quality necessarily as temperature, but it is for the organisms that live there, particularly like brook trout, which are cold water species which exist in this stream. I should have, I'm sorry, I have to grab something here. I wanted to pass something up, I forgot. Just to make sure that, I assume you all know where we're talking about, or you don't. Okay, so this is a rough location map that Courtney put together. You'll see the shaded area is the wildlife management area, and Pond Road, the prominent yellow road going into the pond. This is up off of Marton Road.
Yeah, that little side road.
You got it, it dead ends at the--
Yep.
So, that's the pond we're talking--
Okay.
It's a one acre pond, it's very small. You know, it's a 200-plus acre watershed, so it's actually a sizable watershed, relatively speaking, for such a small pond. So, with respect to the rationale, again, the, you know, the agency is moving to do what it does, which is to be good stewards of this water resource up there. They want to move the dam so that we can reconnect that entire stream channel for the movement of all the organisms that live there, not just the fish, but all of them, because the dam is a significant barrier, as well as the culvert in Pond Road, that shows up as a red dot on the map there, immediately downstream of the dam. That's also a barrier by nature of the way it's built. So, things can't pass through there, and we want to remedy that. Removing the dam and replacing the culvert with a passable culvert would be the first step in that. We want to get rid of the impacts that the dam has, such as the influence it has on the natural transport of sediments and nutrients through the stream system, because right now it collects it all behind the dam, and then, I could bid you have a catastrophic release. That all gets flushed down at once and has incredible impacts on the environment when that happens. So, we really want to make sure that what we do here is remedying those core issues. That is what, that was probably the most important part of our decision-making, to be clear. There's a lot of other parts of the decision-making that I'll go into here. One of the things that really played out is that this dam is in dire need of work. It came to us in poor condition, it has long since outlived its useful life. It no longer serves as fire prevention, and it hasn't seen maintenance of any substantive nature in years, and it is in chaotic disarray. There's cracks in concrete. You know, DuBois and King, over the years, has done a number of dam inspections, as well as our dam safety engineers within the state government, DEC Dam Safety Program, and they have all pointed at all the different issues with this dam. And it needs to be addressed. We do not have a choice. And when we have, well, let me back up here. This is kind of an interesting fact that I learned as a part of this process, is that the Agency of Natural Resources is one of, if not the largest land of dam owners in the state. We have over 100 dams that the Agency of Natural Resources own, and 66 of them are Vermont Fish and Wildlife owned, which is crazy to me, how many dams we own, right here in this district. Within a half hour, we can get to three dams that the stewardship team, which these folks sit on, are overseeing. So, Colby Pond in Redding, and the Nat Brook Ponds, and maybe that's also Redding, I think. But this dam in particular is in dire need of work. All of the inspections have pointed to the various issues that need to be remedied and taken care of. So, that is playing heavy on our decision here. And then the other thing is that it's deemed unsafe. The last inspection report, I think it was 2023, again, completed by, I think that was completed by DEC, actually downgraded its condition to unsatisfactory, because if you recall, earlier that same year, we had some floods, and those floods literally further exacerbated the conditions that had already been identified. And so, it was from poor to unsatisfactory, so just elevating our issue here. And it's also considered a significant hazard, which is not to be implied that it would result in the loss of human life if it was to breach, but it would certainly result in the impacts of infrastructure, in this case, three different town roads. So, and that's all detailed in the reports. And I should also say here, well, before I forget, that tomorrow, unfortunately, it didn't happen time-wise for today, but tomorrow we'll be having, we'll be posting a website where these inspection reports and all these documents can be found if you have additional questions or you want to direct people to that website. And I can work with Riley to make sure that that web link is circulated. So, yeah, the environmental benefits, poor condition, and the significant hazard. And last but not least, before we move on, is the cost benefit. So, with 100 dams, 66 of which Fish and Wildlife owns, we have to be selective of where we put our money. And there is a higher degree of expectation on how we manage, operate, and maintain dams now, which is a righteous thing, given the decades of deferred maintenance that a lot of dams have seen, given the fact that we have increasing flood events and higher waters. So, we need to be putting more resources into the dams that we have, and we need to be really taking a hard look at what dams we're going to maintain, right? Nat Brook Pond Dams are a perfect example. They have boat launches, they get stocked with trout, people go out there for bird watching, you know, waterfowl hunting, fishing. They are core ponds that the WMA, the Wildlife Management Area, was built around. Those are clearly going to get priority for our funds versus a one acre pond that has long since outlived its functional life. Not to say that people don't love it, and I get that, but it's what it is. We, and so we had DuBois and King, again, do a cost benefit analysis and alternatives analysis in 2022, I think they did it. And just to give you some rough numbers here, to rehab, yeah, rehab the dam, to basically leave it as is, but fix it, would be $383,000, that's in 2022 money. To replace the dam would be $600,000, that's to tear it out and put a new dam in. To remove the dam, which is what we're proposing, and mind you, once the dam's removed, there's no more money that has to go to that thereafter, where the other options do, and those figures don't include that. It's $159,000. So, we're going to have a lot of money on the stake, at stake here, just to remove it, but it's far less than the other options, and we feel like that is our only option, to be good stewards of not only the resources, but to be good stewards of the money that we have through the various avenues that we get it. Next steps would be on November 4th, so a week from this coming Tuesday, and that's Tuesday, November 4th. We're going to have a public information session. We're not calling it a public input session, because we're really not taking a ton of input here. I'll explain that, you know, in a second, but it's to get this word out, essentially what I've just expressed will be expressed by a number of us in a more detailed and less rushed way.
Where is the--
It's at the Waypoint Welcome Center here in town, and it'll be at 6:30, and we're hoping maybe 8 o'clock. We haven't reserved until 8:30, if we need to go that late. And there'll be a number of staff, and Ron Rhodes, our partner with Connecticut River Conservancy, and someone from Andrew's office there, DuBois and King, if not Andrew himself, will be there to present as well as answer questions. So, that's the first step. And then we take that input, which we are limiting to really what we do with the site after the dam is removed. So, you know, there's a lot of different options, how we restore the stream channel. Do we try to attract beavers? What do we plant? Do we have a plaque that monuments what was here? Those sort of, I call it nibbling around the edges, because we're removing the dam. But what we do with it afterwards, I want people to be comfortable with, even if they are upset by the removal. So, there's some flexibility for input on that. Once we have that input, we go to 100% design? Yeah.
I just, are you, kind of both of you, are you worried about like an overwhelming reaction to this?
It is certainly possible, and I, this is, I got involved in a similar project years ago, the Baton Kills. It's a city that is quite different in the sense that people's properties backed up to it, and their real estate value was related to the existence of a pond, so that was very heated. But that was my only experience with dam removal, and it was very heated. And I would lean on others, my colleagues, that have done this.
I'll just go back a number of years when the prison closed, and we had, there were a lot of meetings about what was going to happen to the property.
Oh, yeah.
At that point, we heard a lot of concern about the pond, and all, you know, the real teaching of the kids to fish there and all those kinds of things.
That's, so this pond, for me specifically, I moved here in the summer of 2019. So, during COVID, I would walk up there to that pond and go, ooh, and then walk back down. So, this is very interesting to hear they all are doing this, and I'm just like, are you worried about an overwhelming reaction to this?
I wouldn't phrase it that way. I think whenever something happened there, there are a lot of community interest. I think the difference here is in the past, when we talked about the dam, it was driven cost savings.
Yeah.
We don't need it anymore. There was all kinds of drama when the, when the water tank went in. People were thinking it's like the Cherry Hill, New Jersey, 100-foot tank, and you can't even see it over the trees. So, the solar panels, but now that it's a wildlife management area, and you're hearing the rationale behind it, it's all for the stewardship of the land. I think there are going to be a number of people that are going to be interested in learning what's going to happen, but I wouldn't say it would be an adversarial conversation.
Okay.
I think it's also fair to say, I totally agree with you, and just add that there will be people who have deep roots to this place and who will be deeply upset by this. And so, and that's, it bothers me, because I get it. But at the end of the day, the rationale that we've applied here is really, it's the best that we're going to do for all of the checkboxes that we need to check. Did anyone on the line want to add to that?
Sure, Chris, I would just add, I just finished my 25th dam removal as a project manager. We did one in Springfield, on Valley Street. And even when they're in someone's backyard on private property, there's always going to be somebody that's opposed. You know, it's an emotional thing for some people, it's change, right? It's hard to envision what it's going to look like afterwards. So, yeah, I think we're going to have, you know, a handful. I don't think it's going to be an outpouring, but we're going to have a handful of people that are upset by, you know, the idea of the dam not being in there anymore.
No, I, for the record, I, like, all of this makes sense to me, that's terrifying. I just am wondering, like, from our town perspective, and also why you're, okay, but that makes sense to me, I'm into it.
We want to ensure that we get out ahead of this, because, I think Marie nailed it on the head, there was a lot of sentiment, we took over ownership of the property, that this pond was important and that it was to be maintained. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we're being transparent with all the players, namely here tonight, the town. I want to make sure you guys know where we're at and where we're headed. So, if there's a chance to, like, you know, provide input there, we're all ears.
And just--
Yeah.
For getting ahead of it, some may say, like, well, wait a minute, the decision's made. But in 2014, we had this conversation about removing the dam, and to the state's credit, they listened, and here we are 11 years later, and we're talking about removing the dam, because the time really has come. But this has been an issue that's been on the radar screen for the community for decades. So, it's not new for news. Anyways--
When I was a teenager, that was kind of like a hangout spot, sorry, but it was. And I'm talking like over 20 years ago. So, like, I, I've hung out up there a lot, and I remember back then, it was such a sketchy place, just like, it was very rundown. You could tell, and this was a lot, these were decades ago, so I'm honestly surprised that it made it this far.
We would like to take care of it before it becomes even worse.
Yeah.
It's headed that way.
And we have flash flooding kind of all the time now, so.
So--
Do you have a date yet?
Yeah, so that's actually the next steps here. So, public info, inputs, 100% design plans, then Ron will start, he's already started looking for grant money to help defer, you know, to spread the cost here, cover the cost, and then permits. We have to give an act 250 permit on this, because of the existing permit that's on that property, which I'm not looking forward to that conversation, but, and then finally, if all goes as planned, we're looking at 2026. So, probably late summer 2026 would be the ideal. And so, that, that's kind of, I'm going to pass this out here, I'll pass it around. These are, these are the 60% design plans, which will be presented to the public. You know, to the extent that you're interested in looking at, it's, it is, again, not the final plan. It's draft, and, but it actually exists, I think it's fair to say. So, this will be, I think, the last point before we get you guys back to your agenda. I appreciate your patience with me. So, this is all reliant on Pond Road access. And we are going to have, you know, dump truck loads of debris being called out, and equipment going back and forth, and we'd like to be able to shut that road off during the process of this removal. I mean, back out at Marton Road, not, you know, not somewhere in, back out of Marton Road, and--
Where the Big Hill is?
Right on, you know where the Key West is?
Yeah.
The WMA, the parking lot kiosk, across the street from the kiosk is where Pond Road goes in. So, we'd like to shut down the entire length of the Pond Road during, you know, this decommissioning here, for safety, public safety. It's a very narrow road, these are big trucks and equipment, and trying to pass would be a challenge.
This is, this is large yellow machines that are going to have to hammer the heck out of that thing and break all the concrete apart, dig it all out. They're going to have to haul in rock to stabilize the areas that they work from, and they're going to have to haul out rock and all that concrete and everything else. So, it's not a safe condition for people to be walking on that road.
Are there houses up there?
No, there is an access. The Pond Road serves as access to an abiding landowner. It's not their primary access to their residence, but it is access that they use regularly to their property. And it's mostly from what I've observed, and I would like, I hope that that resident shows up at the public meeting, because I think that's mostly during hunting season, and ideally, we wouldn't be up there during hunting season, which is now, it's not late to be doing this kind of work. In fact, I think it's fair to say we can't do it, it was October 30th and after, which we simply can't, because of the rules, regulations related to playing in the rivers.
What is the timeframe of the game?
So, we're looking at three to four weeks, that's the estimate. So, it's not months, but it could be as much as closing in on a month, and that's if everything goes as planned, which I suspect it will, but you don't know. The other aspect of the road is that we are packaging this project of dam removal with replacing that culvert, which is immediately downstream of the dam. So, we're going to go at all this expense to remove the dam to improve aquatic organism passage and reconnect that whole stream channel and restore the stream channel. But there is a culvert there on Pond Road, which is impeding, you know, movement, because it's perched, meaning it's like at the end of the culvert, it drops down some distance into a shallow pool below it, so nothing to get up into it. That is not in the design plans that you're looking at, because that's still being ironed out. But to put your mind at ease, that is something that we are anticipating paying for and doing as part of this project. So, I don't see that as a burden on the town, other than it's going to be a disruption to the road and the public's use of the WMA, and maybe a disruption to the landowner who accesses their property. But again, Andrew, was the three to four week estimate, did that include the road work as well?
I think that's still appropriate, yeah. As it stands right now, we're proposing an upsized culvert replacement. So, I know we haven't discussed that through with the team yet, but what I'm planning on is a squash culvert replacement that is compatible with the dam removal sizing.
You're shutting it down to both vehicles and, like, pedestrians?
Well, we hadn't really discussed that, actually, and, you know, it's hard to shut down pedestrian--
I know, I was like, you're going to have a heck of a time with that unless you get up there, sparring them.
I think, you know, I would defer to the judgment of my colleagues and others on the stewardship team who aren't here, but my knee-jerk would be, we would post it as, like, you know, no vehicles, and others pass it on risk, or some, some way of making it clear that there is, this is a busy spot, and be on top of your game when you're up there, because that road doesn't access a huge part of the property, including a chestnut orchard, which they have a lot of, they do a lot of work up there, not so much in late summer. And I intend to work with the principles of that effort, the American Chestnut Foundation, to make sure that this doesn't impact them. And maybe what would happen is we open the road up. If you're familiar with Pond Road, it goes up, and then it splits off to where the chestnut orchard is. Maybe during the weekends, when there's not active, you know, construction going on, the road opens up to that point. And then Monday morning, when it all happens again, it gets closed back out to Marton. Those are the sort of, I call it nibbling around the edges again, of managing-- And then Monday morning, when it all happens again, it gets closed back out to Martin. Those are the sort of, a call nibbling around the edges again of managing this. But you know, if, if you had concerns or input on how you'd like that handled, I mean, that's one of the main reasons why we wanted to get in front of you today too. So.
Chris, I think the important thing is, you know, for an active construction site, right? We're going to have to have it flagged off. We don't want someone that doesn't have a hard hat and a safety vest walking into the construction zone. So we can, like you said, we can keep it partway open for foot traffic up to that one point. But you know, once we get near the construction, you're going to have triaxle dump trucks full of concrete, you know, going back and forth. We don't, we don't want anyone getting hurt.
Yeah, that, that's, thank you for that clarification. That's true. I, I think it's technically, you, it's, it's like OSHA maybe even regulates that or something. You cannot have people in this area.
I would think particularly while it's active, like business hours.
Right.
It'd be like any place, that's where you're closing a road to do work. And with enough getting the word out and signage there, I, I would imagine the 99 and a half percent of the people will be respectful of the road for, for a week, five weeks, whatever it is. So I think we just need to convey what, what people can expect and then market accordingly. Um, for, for what it's worth, if you've walked or driven on Pond Road, it's.
It's rough.
And then any improvement that's been done, it's been done by the state a couple of years ago. They went out and they, they put some material and stuff. We helped a little bit, but, um, there's always been kind of a partnership, uh, on that particular stretch. And it's really, I think we've always viewed it, it's just recreational. It doesn't need to be there for anything other than access to.
Yeah. I've got my car stuck on that.
And Tom, Tom, that's an important point. You know, before we hire a contractor to do this work, um, part of their requirements, their, you know, will have the permit conditions, but then also in our contract with them, they will have to restore everything that's disturbed and that includes the road. So if they rut up the road, which they will, um, they will be out there grading it, you know, and putting stone down before we open it back up.
Yeah. I, I see the biggest practical concern is from the snowmobile people. So that there's assurances that it's open, passable and in good condition. If it ever snows, uh, is that part of the vast trail system up that way? And they'll be able to use that in the winter.
We would certainly be out there, of course. There's no doubt.
Not leaving any great big holes.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, except for where the pond was. There'll be a little bit of a hole there.
It's going to be a little void.
And also part of, I, I didn't touch on it, but next steps, it's not just removal of the dam. There is a restoration of that stream channel, including plantings. You know, maybe signage or different aspects, but there will be a restoration of that channel. It takes place after all the big yellow trucks have left. That will be done mostly in-house by the agency of natural resource staff.
So I assume this will be a lot like Wile E. Coyote going up there with dynamite and blowing the dam out. Can we have like a, a viewing section when you guys do that?
Yeah.
I wish. Tom, if they, when they let me do that, I'm going to retire.
What if we wear hard hats?
No, this is, uh, yellow excavators with a big hydraulic hammer on the end, you know, breaking concrete apart little by little.
No dynamite?
No dynamite.
Okay. Well, we're set out there. Nothing to see here.
Probably would be able to see if you stand up where the, where the, the new trees are. If the leaves are down, I saw one, I saw it yesterday, just to look around. You could see that fence. You can stand up there.
It's quite, it's quite open.
Has the dam been notched?
It was. So in, uh, 2024, so not this past summer, the summer before, um, the condition of the dam had been deteriorating for so long and increasingly speeding, you know, fast. Um, DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation Dam Safety Program required that we, uh, do some risk reduction measures to buy us time to have these plans and to make the decision and to get the, you know, to get the whole package together. So we lowered the, the water level by 2.4 feet by notching the primary spillway. And that is not, and I worry that some might deem that as, well, that's fine. You've reduced all the risk. Well, that's not fine. Don't forget the whole environmental aspect of this movement here. We want to get that dam out of there. And also it doesn't eliminate the risk. It doesn't fix the problem. It's just a bandage, a Band-Aid on a pretty, pretty big sore.
When I saw it, I was more concerned that it wasn't an intended thing. Part of it fell off.
It was very, very much intended. So, um, do you feel okay with the road aspect of it in particular? Is that comfortable? Is there?
Should we reach out to the private owner of the?
We'll, we'll make them aware.
Okay. Okay, babe. Yep.
Yeah. I'd like to think that if there was a reason for them to be able to, they had to get through during that time, that we could maybe work that out somehow. I don't, I can't promise that. I don't know the details of how that would work, but if there was a compelling reason why they had to get through there at some point, I think that's probably fair.
Burn that bridge when we get there.
Yeah.
You, you may have, uh, worked with them, you know, in the board of civil authority when they were, uh, grieving their new values and they were using access to their portion of the property through Pond Road as part of their grievance. So I mean, they would have gone through the same, I, I, I would imagine the same concerns that I have as, as they would this time.
Sounds like Ron wants to speak up on that.
Yeah. If they have another access, you know, for 911, then they would go in and out that way. Um, cause once we pull that culvert out, right? You're not going to be able to get, drive a car through there. So it's going to take probably what, Andy, a week to pull the culvert out, the new one in.
Right.
So at least for a week of the four weeks, you know, there's not going to be vehicle access past the, up past the dam.
Well, I, um, you know, I will commit to, you know, certainly through you and, and another avenue, if you suggest such, but, uh, to let you know, keep you informed of those plans as they unfold. And if concerns are raised about the roads, I, we're, we're, you know, all ears to hear that out and to try and figure out how to make it happen. Hopefully we can figure that out. Awesome. Thank you for.
Thank you guys.
It's a lot. I do.
Thank you for online people.
Thanks for all the other work up there. That's really been a, a magnet of bringing people to the area. It's a beautiful piece of property.
Crazy how popular it is compared to our other WMA. It's the one people go to.
Yeah. That was like the first like thing that I started loving about Winder is that place. So that's, listened to Chromatica by Lady Gaga and walked uphill.
It's a beautiful farm.
Beautiful album.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is an action item to consider for approval of first class restaurant bar license, a third class restaurant bar license, outside consumption permit for Silo Distillery.
Uh, yep. Uh, Silo has new owners. So, um, as, as part of that, all of these licenses have been in place, but we need to re-vote with the new ownership and the new ownership has been involved almost since its inception. They've been part of their organization. It's now. One group is stepping away and the others are taking a bigger role. So, um, by doing this will help them, uh, get back open and labeling their products with their new, there should still be Silo, but there's a corporate name.
Yep.
I'd make a motion that we consider, um, first class restaurant or license, a third class restaurant or license and outside consumption permit for Silo Distillery.
A second. Is there any discussion?
Mary, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Ryan?
Aye.
Excellent. Next up is action item to consider the approval of a validation resolution related to the March 2019 town meeting vote for the bladed property bond.
Okay. So this item and the next one are essentially the same things, but just related to two different bonds. As we discussed at a prior meeting when we were talking about bond authorization, I think it was for the rec center. Okay. Um, there's a provision when you ask the community to approve a bond, um, where we're supposed to post it in a newspaper for three weeks on the same day each week. And, um, we didn't do that. We considered the newsletter as, uh, a posting in Facebook and it was posted physically in all the places we post the agendas. And we've been a, we've been doing that, uh, for years and we've drawn money from bonds for years, but then, you know, there are new people involved, both with attorneys and with bond bank, and they paid a little closer attention to all the requirements. And they said, hey, you didn't do that. So what this validation resolution says is we acknowledge we didn't do that. We believe that we still made, uh, a good faith effort to inform the public of the intention. The question passed on, you know, the town meeting warrant. So, uh, there's no material, uh, deficit here, uh, that would have caused people to be unaware or change their minds. So we don't have to revote it.
How did it come from 2019? How did it come to your attention? Like, why are they, who is going back? Are they looking at records? Like, why did it come up now?
It, it came up now because we had a different bond for road construction, um, from, I believe 2021, maybe that we had already drawn, uh, $700,000 from a $1 million bond. So we went to the bond bank and said, we want $200,000 to pave some roads this year.
Was that the one that we did, we were talking about, is somehow it's asked the same one?
Yeah. So what we did is the attorney we had said, nope, there's no way around it. You have to put new, new questions to the public.
Right. The recent ones.
Yeah. And we said, we don't like that answer. So we went to an attorney we had used prior for bonds. And he said, no, that's all right. You can just pass one of these resolutions. The bond bank will accept that. So we passed the resolution for that one. So we were able to draw that money. While we had an attorney looking at that, we said, this isn't the only bond. We followed the same process for all of them. So if this is an issue, let's clean everything up. So we don't have any intention right now of drawing from these bonds. This is just a matter of squaring up the paperwork. So with the expectation of sometime in the future, wanting to draw from the bonds that were remedied.
But if this is at all, like a couple of years old, we've never used the money? Like we've just had a bond somewhere hanging around and we didn't use the money?
That's correct. But we don't pay anything for it.
No, I'm, I'm not implying that we do, but it's just, it's there. We just haven't accessed it from 2019.
Uh, right. Um, there are, that one is the Blight bond. So back then, we need to do something about Blight in town. Well, so the only way you can really take care of Blight is end up owning the buildings. So we went to the town and we said, okay, you support this? They said, yes. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we haven't had to use that money. We found other ways through tax sale or different things to acquire certain properties, lock them down. So the money is still on the books. There were, there, there has been a time or two, because we know we have that authorization, that we entered into negotiations with a couple of problematic properties in town to see if we could acquire them. They never came to fruition, but.
So we never had to dip into it kind of thing.
Right. Yeah. And the other one is for, uh, building renovation, like maintenance on municipal buildings.
The 23 one?
Yeah. Yeah. So.
I see.
Did they go bad? The bonds like.
Like is not in expiration.
Yeah.
Kind of thing. Sorry.
They, they, they don't go bad. Uh, they're, all, what it does is it says the public has agreed to support going into debt for that purpose.
Okay.
Whenever we want to pull the money, there's a whole different process where we have to demonstrate the fiscal stability of the community that we can take on the debt. So it's not, it's not like you, you applied for a loan back when you were making $50 million a year and now you never really needed it. Now you don't have a job, so you're going to pull. So they check on that. The other part of it is, um, and if, let's say the community or the board was not supportive of that, you could vote to reverse the authorization. So.
Or you mean like at this point?
Yeah. Wait a minute. Why we have this whole thing to take care of Blight? I don't even know what Blight is. Why are we saying that?
I don't even know what the bonds are.
You know, ignorance is bliss.
James. Real.
James Bond. So, um, if you made a motion to, uh, approve validation resolutions for the 200, not 2019 and 2023 bonds, that would cover both, same issue with both.
So we were all kind of confused.
I imagine. Well, when we were told we couldn't have the money, when we already got the money, we had been confused and I will once again give Natalia a lot of credit for digging through the weeds on this. She didn't have any background in, in the bond process and she's been working with the attorneys to get this all straightened out.
I'd share.
Okay. I'll make a motion then that we approve the validation resolution related to 2019 and 2023, um, for the bonds.
A second. Is there any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Ryan?
Aye.
Awesome. Next up, discussion item, quarter one finance update.
Really? Yeah, it is. Okay. All right. So in, in your packet is, um, here we are at the end of the first quarter and there's, there's nothing really that, that stands out of note. Um, we're kind of too early in the year to, um, get excited or dejected about things with, with an asterisk. Um, our, our ambulance revenue is really taking it on the chin. Uh, we're down, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars in the first quarter compared to prior quarters. And that revenue, while it is a, basically it's a business, has been, uh, quite stable over quite some time. And July was a bad month. But we have bad months. August was a bad month. And sometimes you have two bad months, but when you have three bad months, it's a trend. So, um, uh, we are assessing what's going on. One of the things we are aware of is there's, um, a new ambulance service in the market and Dartmouth may be getting into the business themselves, a hospital. So the, uh, what we currently are doing is looking at what it costs us to provide ambulance and fire service now. And, uh, what our expectation is as far as being able to maintain or increase business with these new competitors. And what is the point of service where we could be equal or less to in net cost, revenue, less expense, uh, to provide the service that so far it has been pretty clear that the community expects us to have 911 ambulance service from town, not contracted elsewhere. And with a hospital and nursing homes, they're, we're different than other towns that don't have it. One could argue we have some of that because we've long had a paid department and it provides that service. So we're working on that. Uh, hopefully things change just because they do, because we can make some changes, but we can't make changes like everybody's gone, everything sold, uh, cut the bleeding right away. So.
Ryan?
Tom, we've seen some, we've had some concerns for a couple of years now, right? Especially with like the, the Medicare reimbursement stuff was an issue. Also that was kind of on the horizon a year or two ago, right? Is that related or is this different?
Uh, I'm going to say it's different. I mean, there, the market has been dynamic for some time. In Medicaid, they give you a flat amount. You know, you can charge whatever you want. They pay you what they're going to pay you. Um, in that particular instance, what we did is we increased our rates because of the other insurance companies will pay more of the higher rate. So our, our write-off percentage went up, but our, our net dollars also went up. So that's how we, we address that. We can't just not show up. So that's really not an option. Um, the other thing that was going on is we were having like all of the services, uh, 911 calls for overdoses. We get there, administer Narcan or do whatever we do, and then the patient will refuse to ride. They don't ride, we can't charge anything. So we were having a lot of need without any money. And. And, um, that maybe is going on a little less with the prevalence of Narcan in other people's hands, so we don't get the same number of calls. And there had been talk in the legislature to, to require a stipend being paid for non-ride calls. I'm not aware of that actually coming through. The thing that's here that's making it that we've never seen before is our ride counts are down by about fifteen a month. I mean, that's only a half ride a day. So it's not like it's shouting at you like, hey, we went from three hundred to two hundred or something like that. Our insurance write-offs have gone from, like, say, twenty three, twenty four percent of gross to, uh, twenty nine percent of gross. And there's no, there's, nothing has changed that we're aware of in the market that says, why are we being denied more unless there is some policy where certain things are being more scrutinized at, at the Medicare, Medicaid, insurance levels where they're denying things and it's, and it really, it started in, in July. Uh, it's not like it's been creeping. It's been, there's a line. So our write-offs are more. Our run counts are less and our, we, we write off any debt that's over a year old and there's a story behind that. But, um, if after a year we haven't collected, people are gone from the area, died, you know, whatever it is, we, we write that off. And that dollar amount has been going up and that may just be again because of when you're dealing with a regular population or a slightly elderly population, it's still a stable population. When you're dealing with more transient populations and more addiction issues, the likelihood of even if there's someone to charge to be able to continue to follow up with that person diminishes. So all, all three different things that may or may not be related. Uh, and so it's not just, hey, there's a new competitor that are taking all the business. We don't even know if they're taking all the business or they are doing transfer only kind of business. But, and that's our discretionary ones. Those are the ones we can say we don't want to take somebody from Dartmouth to Mount Ascot near to. So that will be bad. If this, it, it's not a good thing. Like, hey, we found a few hundred thousand dollars. What are we gonna do? The other thing which will be for conversations and future meetings is, uh, our audit is complete. And, uh, no surprises, everything's fine. But again, Natalia has been, I'll say, more inquisitive, uh, more demanding of the auditors. And I, I think the numbers that I've been saying, you're not supposed to remember all this. This is just, please don't. Um, the general fund, the operating budget, the things you guys vote on. I think I had mentioned we had, uh, originally it was fifty thousand and a hundred and fifty, then two hundred and fifty.
Three and three fifty.
Well, it, it's, it looks like it's settled to two fifty. Okay? And not going into all the details, there's some things we're looking on. One, we collected, we billed seventy seven thousand dollars less in property taxes than we needed to satisfy. And I, why, why did that happen? What seems to be the case is that we always use the, uh, the, the assessor lodges the grand list with the state in April. And so that's the official grand list. And there may be little changes to it. You know, we'll, we'll see, uh, errors and omissions come to the board because a mistake is found, but we're talking hundreds or a couple thousand dollars. There, there seems to be a reduction of about four million dollars in the grand list. And what it looks like is that the grand list was set and then between the time it was set and the time we set the tax rate, all those grievances related to the, um, revale came in. And that's like the one exception when you adjust the grand list. Then, not all the other years, it's like you wait till the next time you lodge it. So, uh, by the time we got to the bottom of all of this, Michelle, the assessor, uh, had gone for the day, but what, what our expectation is that those grievances were going on. We were using the April one like we always do. But this revale year is when, I mean, I'm going to guess even a four million dollars must have been some kind of like commercial error or something in it that was identified and taken out. So when, um, the, the bills actually went out was based on a lower value than it was in April. So that's a third of it. Another third of it is related to hiring personnel like Tiffany and Michelle and using an agency, um, so that they're making more. And then the other third of it is, um, high repair costs to existing equipment. Some of that is tied to the delays that we've experienced in getting the newer equipment still trailing from COVID. But, um, you know, I can look at the three of them and, and say, okay, that's, that is the breaks. That first one was, you know, that's cut us all by surprise. So. So if we have that, it will look to catch up. And this isn't looking like a great year. Yeah, it's, it'll be an extra fund budget season.
Budget season is getting worse.
Yeah, they're scary.
When you look at what's going on out in the world, um, when people say everybody deserves a fifteen dollar wage. Okay, we want that, but then you have to pay because the fifteen people, the twelve go to fifteen, the fifteen go to eighteen, the eighteen go to twenty five, you know, whatever it is. And there's no employees. So on the plus side, we have always been fully staffed with good people.
Yeah.
But it costs, I'm sure anybody will tell you, more to do that than it ever has. You look at what's been going on, uh, with healthcare costs, that's not a town thing, that's a systemic thing. So, um, there are, and like, like the equipment. We ordered a dump truck in April that we expect it to be here this fall. We're not getting it until next summer. So, and the truck is sitting on the lot, the cabin chassis. The delay is everybody that's been behind going to the company that, uh, outfits the dump, dump thing and the sander thing and all those kind of things. That's where the delay and it's not a company. It's, that's what the market is doing right now. Not good things. Go ahead.
I, I was gonna say, I had a question about the revolving loan funds. I thought that when we paid for the two houses, that there wasn't anything left in the revolving loan fund, but this is in Fund A that was two hundred, that's mine, two thousand and four thousand?
Mm-hmm.
I was getting repaid and we're getting money back.
I haven't paid for the houses yet.
I thought we had.
We paid fifty thousand. But we don't have them. There, there's a payment schedule. They have to meet benchmarks before we write the checks. So.
But even that, we were supposed to end up paying them two, like four hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Only one was coming up.
Uh, that's me.
We had it coming out of two accounts, right?
Well, even the, the B fund here is only sixty two thousand, so that doesn't come up to four fifty.
I guess I missed Mary's question. What's, what's your question, Mary? I didn't underst, I don't understand what.
That I thought when we paid for the two houses out of the revolving loan fund, that, that pretty much depleted the fund. But on this sheet of paper here, it says the Fund A has two hundred and four thousand in it and the Loan B has sixty two thousand. That doesn't add it. And Tom was saying, we didn't pay for them totally, but it's, that number doesn't add up unless I'm.
Well, the Cox house thing, the bottom, that, that's included in that as well. So that's another twenty seven thousand. And I forget if we paid fifty or a hundred.
So that's still, okay, two sixty six and then twenty seven, three eighty, that's still not four fifty. I was just curious.
We paid for some already. I mean, we may be a, a couple of three thousand dollars short. But, uh, we've paid some and that's what the current.
So I guess I was like, where did that come? How, why is that still there is what I was getting at. But it's basically, that's called.
That will be gone.
Yeah, okay. I, I just, when I saw it there, it didn't make any sense.
Yep.
Any other comment? All right, we're gonna go into all.
Well, we, so we've talked, so Tom, you think the deficit, you said two fifty or three fifty? I didn't.
You expect. Uh, no, it's, we, we ran a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, but because of fiscal year cash flows, we picked up a hundred thousand dollars through our grant activity, paid for them in different years. So we picked up a hundred thousand dollars there. So the net is two fifty.
So that's really the deficit is two fifty around there.
Right, so really the deficit is around two fifty. The other part that, um, we're, we're working on is, uh, it's a little bit of inside baseball, but our software can't do project accounting. So like when we do a construction project, we can't set up a separate thing and do it. So it runs through whatever, the general fund, the capital reserve, uh, water and sewer, all that kind of stuff. And, um, the general fund, the operating thing is pretty straightforward. Our reserve fund is straightforward. The capital fund that we vote on every year, put this much money in a capital fund for these reasons. That part of it is straightforward, but the other thing that happens with that fund is when we get grant money or bond money to fund a project that goes in there and like all of the money comes in and goes into the general fund. And like when we're doing the, uh, that, the Elm Street project or Pine Street project where we had water lines, sewer lines and paving. All of the money, the grants, FEMA, bonds goes into the general fund. All the expenses get paid out of the general fund. And then we have to transfer the money, the revenue into the capital because of capital assets like roads and buildings and all that, water or sewer. And then we got to transfer all of the expenses into the water and sewer. So there's a lot. You can't just open up a book and say, show me the accounting for this project. You have to untangle it. So Natalia is developing a structure that will still require this kind of transfer, but maybe set up like a different account number.
Separates it a little bit, so you can see it better.
So I am certain that over all of these years, I have never had to come to the board and said, hey, we have a two million dollar project that's coming in at two point eight. We may have had a, a two million dollar dam project that came in at three million dollars, but then we went out like we were supposed to get a million dollar bond grant. We got a two million dollar bond grant and things like that. But when, you know, I, I at least look back on my tenure and I look at the nonsense that was FEMA funding for those first five years and use it for this project, that project's not, we're going to reassign the project. And then we have, you know, quite a bit of grant money that came through. And then we have bond money that came through. Other than my, uh, anecdotal knowledge of how all of that worked, there's no way you could go into our accounting and try to break that back out. So, uh, we're going to be working to make that a better project moving forward. So just throw that part out there.
So that's more like an accrual deficit with some money held over from like, just from my accounting standpoint, or do you think that's like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar actual like cash deficit that we have to dip into reserve funds for?
Oh, no, I think we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we got.
Okay. Do you think that if we're averaging a hundred K a quarter negative in the ambulance, do you think we're gonna, and with no real reason for that trend to change, do you think we're in a bad way with that?
Uh, we're gonna be in a bad way, but we won't be at the end of the second quarter with a hundred thousand dollar loss. Some, if it's trending that way, we'll be making changes. You know, like in November, um, to stem the tide, so to speak. And the more time we have, the more impact we can have in doing that. Uh, it, it would be difficult to make up around, like every, all the departments are on a spending freeze, hiring freeze, you know, all that kind of stuff. And still providing the services we're supposed to, uh, but keeping your fingers crossed and saying, oh, we got two new ambulances. Um, so our repair cost should be going down, thinking we were going to have a new dump truck. Well, that part's gone. You know, the good part is we had to put a new engine in one last year, so that one shouldn't break this year. Something else could break on it. So it's going to be a challenge. Uh, and, um, yeah.
So does this mean the hundred thousand from the ambulance, like what's been happening? Well, it, it is going to get added to the two fifty, even though you just got rid of a hundred thousand. Like you were able to cut it from three fifty or three hundred down to two fifty, but now we have the hundred thousand. Is that, is that correct or not correct?
Let's say if the, uh, the stars remained aligned and nothing was done, we could be looking at six hundred and fifty or seven hundred thousand at the end of this year.
No, I understand you're gonna try to, you're gonna make changes. I'm saying, but still now that's where we're at. Oh, right. We can't, like, we don't have the money to kind of offset that at this point, even if you make changes going forward, we're still.
Well, I mean, that's just looking at one component of the budget. You take a look at another line, the money that we're making on the Hoysington fund, like normally we, um, I think budget like four thousand dollars a year income from that. And let's see, is the Hoysington fund even on this one?
Is that, that's only used for certain, it's not specific or something? I couldn't remember. You had mentioned that one other time. What is the Hoysington fund?
If you, the Hoysington fund was a four hundred thousand dollar insurance settlement the town got back in the dark ages. And the village elders have always said, don't touch the Hoysington fund. That's all we have. So we don't touch the four hundred thousand, but there was a directive sent well before my time that says, but you can use the interest.
Oh, okay.
So we usually budget about four thousand dollars a year. That's one percent on four hundred thousand.
What happened if somebody really, like if the town needed that? I mean.
You, see, that's why you guys run to be the select board. You don't go to the community and say, what do you think? You say, I was elected to make these decisions. And you say, gosh darn it.
There's no illegal, there's not a legal thing. It's just like the rule of thumb is what's been going on for all of us.
And we did one, one year, we, uh, had, had a, uh, lawsuit settlement related to construction on the dam where we had to pay contractor a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So we borrowed money from the Hoysington fund at a, at a, at a rate and paid it back over a period of time. So you could do it if you wanted to. You could just say, let's take that money and do something.
To me, like, it's just sitting there. When do you ever know for the emergency?
Nobody ever uses it. Windsor is not benefiting from it.
What's the emergency when you finally say, we need it? So I.
Well, we're generating, I mean, we're generating revenue from the interest and I think
Yeah, right.
that it's a pretty, pretty good nest egg to have that if we look at six hundred thousand.
Never use the nest egg when you need it. Have to prioritize the need. I mean, Tom's saying, we can make this work.
Yeah.
Well, that, my whole point on that was that, that the account currently has four hundred and eighteen thousand in it. So we only budgeted four, but we got eighteen today. And gosh darn it, the market will be going up another thirty percent before the end of the year. So we'll have a hundred thousand dollars to make it back. We can all dream. The, the point, like when you say when you don't have a need, if whether you're a, a business or a household or a town, if your benchmark is to have three months, uh, operating expenses in the bank in case of an emergency, you know, for us, you know, that would be, um, two and a half million dollars. So and when I got here, we had forty thousand dollars in the capital fund. There was no reserve fund. The utility capital funds, you know, were pretty well funded, but there was, there was no money in the bank and the town had run that way for quite some time. So to say that with the benefit that provides you is gives you peace of mind, that if something happens.
Right.
Even with what we have in our accounts today, we're not at that two and a half million point. So, uh, it's like having the reserve fund. When you run a deficit one year, what's supposed to happen is you go, well, we have the reserve fund. Select board votes to allocate a sum of money from the reserve fund to the general fund. Or, and like next year, part of the budget, you say, we, we are going to include an expense line item that says we are going to raise taxes to generate a hundred thousand dollars to pay back the deficit. Conversely, if you have, you run a surplus, you could put a line in the budget that says we're going to use a hundred thousand dollars to buy down the tax rate. And, but once you establish your, um, desired level of savings, we've just, you know, we made progress, but we haven't got to what I think financial people would say is, you know, you know, sound level of saving.
You're, you don't want to spend the revolving loan fund. You want to spend the Hoysington?
I didn't want to spend the revolving loans, if you recall, so.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. You didn't want to spend the revolving, but you did.
It is good to have some savings. I understand that. I just said, it's, it's kind of like, it reminds, I understand what you're saying from respect to like when you put it in a household, but it kind of reminds me of like, you're a charitable organization, you raise funds, right? To use in a community. But then you never use it in the community. You just keep raising funds and you never spend it. But then you never use it in the community, you just keep raising funds and you never spend it kind of thing. And I know that's a different, it's not a great analogy, but that's kind of what it reminds me of. It's like when do you decide your need is there and you dip into it? That's, that's what I was trying to say. But I understand we all have
It's that point.
To, we, we never have to use it.
No, no, no one will accuse me of not spending money.
Well, I'm trying to say that.
But, but, but your point is really what underpins the, the, the struggle with municipal savings.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you have too much, you're saying, well, why does the town get to have my money in their savings account? I wouldn't mind having it in my savings account. So you have to make that balance because there are people, I don't want to spend any money. Look at that. Our, our reserves just keep growing on rainy day fund because you never know, you never know. Well, now these people lived here thirty years, they're driving on junky roads and having buildings fall down. And you got a big fat bank account over here when they may not have minded having a little bit in their bank account instead. So that's, that's where the balance comes in. And I think that's where the Hoysington Fund was essentially found money for the town at that time and don't blow it, you know? We got this, don't just go.
I understand what you're saying now that you explained it. I thought, I couldn't remember when you brought it up before. I thought it had something to do, we could use it, but it only could be used in a specific way. It turns out it's the interest, but I thought it could only be used on certain things, certain type of things. So, so I'm good information.
What are we doing planning wise or what is the plan? Um, I know we kind of thought we'd have some deficit issues, but this could, as you said, if things don't change, I mean, we're looking at half a million, six hundred thousand. What is some of the uh contingency plans that you have or are starting to look at or enact because um it's just, it sounds like a lot for, you know, and maybe I'm wrong, but if we're getting, you know, trending in the wrong direction, a hundred thousand dollars a quarter. That's, and, and when do you say, all right, we need to start making some changes with the way we've done business?
Um, it, it's an incremental thing. I think when we started this year to like be out of the gate until all the department heads know discretionary spending really without my approval. There's a lot of things that fall into discretionary spending. It could be something as simple as uniform replacement. Like, don't do that this year unless you have somebody with no pants or something like that. So there's a lot of line items that make up that discretionary stuff. There's other things that are kind of beyond our control, like the price of gas. If it goes down, we're going to save some money. If it goes up, we just have to adjust that. So that's kind of like, that's managing the line items. The second stage is changing services and that's where we are now. We're looking at what's really going on with the ambulance. The, the other budgets are all in line. So uh which we're going to have to do something everywhere uh to, to help with the ambulance shortfall. But that gets into, we're no longer going to provide these services. We're not going to have as many people on the streets, you know, that kind of thing. So like, once a person stops working for you, you start saving money right away, but you also can't really take that back right away, you know, it's let me break into your car.
You're not going to run anything.
So once we, so, so the, the, the various levers, so to speak, the, the pull there is to spend the absolute minimum we have to to limp through this year. So that, that's one and we'll, we'll do that more and more incremental. The second thing is we do have a, a reserve fund, which it's designed to help out in tight years. So there, you know, you come to the board and say, do you want to take X amount of dollars from the reserve fund to make up the difference? Um, you could say we want to borrow money from the Hoysington Fund. You can say um as part of next year's budget, we want to raise X amount of dollars to compensate for the uh deficit from the prior year. You can say, all right, this is where we are. What are we going to do looking forward for future years' budgets? But we want to make up X amount of dollars and we can do that over three years. So we're committing as much as you can commit to future years' budgets to say, we're going to include X amount of dollars for the next three years and run tight budgets to hopefully to have their own operating surpluses um to get to that point. And I think when we when I, I'm, I'm almost saying like all bets are off, that for the first um however many years, like I went back like two thousand, two thousand and one through two thousand and twenty-two. And I think the cum, the cumulative, if it was a deficit, was forty thousand dollars. Like most of the time you have a bad year, but then you have a good year, you know, that kind of stuff. And the budgets have been closed. If this is a systemic change in the way the market is doing, we can expect that that's not going to come back. That, along with what healthcare costs are doing, like this year, sounds like it's not going to be so bad. But it doesn't mean a year out from now, our liability and workers' compensation insurance, you know, huge swings. So, and you know, we have two union negotiations coming up this year that if it's better to say, we don't want to provide a service than to say, we don't want to be competitive because bad employees, if the good ones leave because they can make more money elsewhere and then you attract bad ones or keep bad ones, um that, like they say, those, those who are cheap buy twice, you know, and it's it's, it's a struggle that we, we, I guess, have all chosen to live in this environment, right? So here we are.
I, oh, go ahead, Mary. Sorry, I'm going to go over you.
I guess I was thinking like with the contracts coming up, like even if we wanted to have a conversation about cutting back personnel or services between fire and um police. Right now, we're in a contract, we couldn't do anything, but
Oh, we can cut people.
But we, don't we have contracts with people?
We have contracts with organizations, we have the ability to hire and fire at will. Staff reductions, we can't just fire because they don't like you, but we can say, you're low man on the totem pole, we're doing a staff reduction, you're out.
I guess I thought because there were contracts that you can't I didn't do that.
The contract Yeah, the collective bargaining area is more like setting up salaries and vacation time and all that, but like Tom's saying, if you said, well, we want to lay off two positions or something, that's part of the the gig. They're not, they don't, like Tom has a contract, but our other employees, the way that we supervise and manage them is guided under a collective bargaining agreement, but it's not the same as like Tom has a contract with us.
I guess they didn't realize that.
Well, for us in that will state for employees, you can be let go for
Well.
But I still thought it'd be a contract though that
We can't go to the fire department and say, you're laid off, you're laid off, you're laid off. We go to the fire department and we look at the seniority list and say, low man on the totem pole, you're gone. Second, a low man on a totem pole. And so, I mean, it's, it's, it's that way. You can still reduce the staff, but you can't do it based on merit, you have to do it based on longevity.
Right. Well, I, I didn't even think we could do that. I thought there was like a contract type of thing and maybe we were locked into it.
All right. So now we'll report to Bloody Mary, going through the halls, looking to chop heads.
No, I know. I'm like, I'm panicking departments because of this conversation right now.
Not that queen.
Uh, hey.
I'm just saying, you know, we may find that people want to have some kind of a conversation this year about that. I don't know. I, I mean,
We may, and, and the other side.
Hear things. And there's nothing wrong with having conversations.
I agree.
No, it, it, that it's when, when we start every single budget year, I ask, what services do you want more of or what do you want less of? But you don't get the same services for less money. Did a grant, doesn't work. We get a lot of grants. The other side of it is, is just to keep in mind is general municipal experience would be that the grant list would grow two to three percent a year. So that you could have a two or three percent growth in your budget and not have a tax increase. Windsor and Vermont in general has no grand list growth, or we're lucky if we get a half a percent. There's, there's, as we know, no housing, there's no commercial development going on. The, the prison, having a hundred houses would be a game changer. If that added fifty million dollars to our, to our grant list, that would have an impact on our taxes with really no impact on our operating services. So I assume that conversation will come up, you know, once again, like it does every year, but um again, people seem to be happy with the services. Nobody, nobody, many people ask for more of something, not, we want more town hall hours, we want more plowing, we want more salt, more salt. So and, and not to get on a soapbox, that, that it bothers me that when everybody else says no, the municipalities are the last one standing and that's where the rubber really hits the road. So when the state says, we're not going to do this, or the feds say, we're not going to do that, we're the ones that have to say, okay, then we'll pick it up. And some of that conversation came with, with like the resource center at WIC. Nobody else wants to pay for a whole bunch of stuff, so the town can pay for it, right? So why do we pay? Well, because there's nowhere to go after you.
Right.
Any other comments? We're going to go into old business with discussion item, town manager search process update.
You can fire me now. I'll get my pension, my severance package after all that bad news. That'll add to your deficit this year. Sorry, hit me the
Nope. All right. So the town manager search process update. Um, I know that Mary and we had, so we, yes, we had a meeting at the library, which was mostly me and Mary chatting for a little while. And then we had two fabulous people come in with a lot of ideas and questions about town in general, but also about the town manager. I think you spoke with him. He said he had come to Doug, I believe his name was.
Oh, Doug and Karen Cohen, yeah.
Yes. So they were, they were interesting. They were involved. They got to meet um, a former select board member that is very involved in the Arbor, Arboretory Arts. It's my gratitude. Yes. So, and that was very interesting, but I think we really encouraged uh both of them to get involved if at all possible with.
He, he seemed interested i- in some development and things and, and he had, he saw in the newsletter about the planning commission. So it's like
We were like
Yeah, you know, contact whoever, yes, we could use population on any committees or whatever, but if you think that's where your interests lies, they'd be glad to have you. So that was encouraging.
And, and a lot similar to a lot of events, like, I'm sorry, Ryan, uh but all similar to a lot of events, we heard like, we want somebody that is very, very business friendly, somebody that's on top of grant writing, somebody that's going to help continue to grow Windsor and la la la. So it's fun.
It was a good conversation because they've been in town for, for three years and fully admitted they'd never been to a meeting, didn't really watch him. So it's like me, I got the impression that he, he wanted to step out, maybe start getting involved in something. So we were very encouraging of that, to come to a meeting and if he has anything on his mind and so maybe, you never know.
I'll take another opportunity to remind you, I have never written a grant. If you not want a person who is good at grant writing, you want someone who's good at delegating grant writing to people who know how to write grants. And there's a lot of free ones. Yeah, well, free is part of their mission to do that.
People just want to know that grant writing can be done. Doesn't matter who does it, as long as it's promoted and proactively kind of looked for. We know it is.
Why, why I make a big deal about it is there are people who are good at grant writing and are terrible at managing people and their managers. And then they end up not managing, they end up writing grants and you don't, that's not what you want.
Right. So, so we don't really have anything planned, I don't think, at this point for anymore. Um, I would be kind of
Brian?
No, I appreciate all the outreach and I think people were going to have a million different ideas, but um, where are we at with deciding on? We're starting to review uh consultants or search firms or where, or where, where, where are we with that? I mean, I get hearing all these ideas is great, but are we pushing forward or what are we doing?
I did reach out to Dominic Cloud. He's uh one of the consultants that we talked about at second to last meeting. Um, and he also works with VLTC. Um, I haven't heard back from him yet, but I just asked if he could either chat with Jeffrey and I, or if he could come to a select board meeting to chat with all of us about those possibilities.
Well, we thought about doing a request for proposals for search firms or that. I only remember a brief conversation about that. I mean, I think, why not put it out there? We're looking for somebody to do the search for us and then see what bubbles up. Me, is that what everyone else has done, Tom, or no?
Uh where, well, not, there's Springfield is currently going through a search. And um they did an RFP and they got like six applicants. And they picked VLCT and Dom Cloud. Um, so I would say, you know, while I try to reinvent the wheel, they've just gone through the same thing in our same end of the world. That coupled with, there's been a lot of bad hires in this area. Uh, Dom hired the current town manager in Hartford, which was a home run. Um, we'll see how he does in Springfield, but Dom, the, the reason I would be supportive of Dom is he's got, you know, the, the backing of VLCT, which really didn't have the horsepower to do that stuff on their own. But he is really plugged into the, the local market and I think with the housing market to get somebody that's going to have to relocate could be a challenge. And if you get bigger firms that are going to do a national search, I mean, if you want to do that, that's fine, but I think that adds a, a level of complexity to the search. Uh, and given that Dom has been in his role for so long, he's been, I think, the president of VLCT on and off again. So he's just plugged into the network and he, he, he knows at least locally the good and bad. And, and I think he would have a good sense of interviewing those who he doesn't know uh on what a Vermont town may, you know, want to be looking for.
And we did have a list, I think it was second to last meeting of that search that Springfield had done. So all of the consultants were on there. Um, and so I was kind of looking at that because like, again, they just did this. Um, but yeah, I would say that list is
I like the, the VLTC and
That's what I liked about Dominic Cloud was that um like, he's not just with some company, he's also with VLTC and I don't know, I just
When did you reach out to him?
Today.
You said today. Okay, sorry. I was like, no, I'm sorry, because I didn't hear what you said. So I'm like, if he didn't get back to you, I, that's fine.
VLTC in the past, I mean, yeah, just, I know John Tansy's information reflects
Very helpful.
Working with VLTC.
Yep.
So it sounds like a proven way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they were involved with my search, the VLTC company, MRI, which we used to hire Bill Sampson and like, I don't know what the process was that got me, but I also heard uh that the candidate pool wasn't all that deep. Um, there was also some problems in Windsor at the time that I apparently was oblivious to. And um but there, there like, there's good and bad said, and I think that's anybody, like you ask anybody about service, I don't think you'll find anybody that speaks poorly of, of Dominic. And when you bring up things like economic development and stuff, anybody who's been around, maybe in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, I attended an ICMA conference uh that was held in St. Albans where Dom is the town manager and he gave a presentation on some of the things he had done that, you know, really did wonders for uh St. Albans. And I had Dom come down and give that presentation here at the Welcome Center um as part of a Rotary presentation. And it's a complicated town. He's done good economic development. Um, he's, he's practical. Anyway, so I, I'm just looking at that from, I don't think it's biased. I think it's practical that he's just started a search at a town next door. He's just been successful in a competitive RFP. He's hired good town managers in the, in the efforts that he's put in. He's working with VLCT that uh and I don't think the cost is different than That uh and I don't think the cost is different than, I mean, I I don't think it's on the high end for sure.
No.
So uh and the other thing is, you know, just to throw it out there, I don't know how Springfield's doing in their search, but if they're going to hire somebody. I think Jeff wants to leave in December. You know, maybe they got four good candidates, you know, and they only can hire one, so you may, you know, have that out of the gate. Uh, you know, still advertised for this, but there's already a vetting process been done to compare things to. That may be helpful.
So I think we can find explore those ideas when Dom gets back with us. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do is. Move in the direction and see where we go.
I like that.
Start chatting with them and and then, you know, make our decision.
And I know he he was involved in the uh. BLCT uh Town Hall. That was a week or two ago. You know, they had their their conference up there and Dom was pretty involved with all that. So I don't know if there's trailing responsibilities that come from that, but um. Aside from that, he's in the same budget situation as the rest of us. Well, I don't know if he's got the problems we have, but um. He should be, I've always found him to be timely in responding.
Awesome. Anyone calling? All right, Tom, take it away with the town manager's report.
All right, the uh rail yards recreation, the grass is growing, the. Uh, paving is happening. Uh, they the the it all should be finished, assuming today is the last day of the rain this week, that Depot Avenue will get paved, the parking lot is part of the. Thing that will be paved. What will not be paved is the uh River Street parking lot. There's a. Forty-five day review process that the state has because it's a brownfields. All stuff that we knew, but um. Uh, planning agency is handling the paperwork on that and it was submitted. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, so. They're in the middle of that forty-five day review process. I don't think it's going to be done in time to pave before. Snow flies, so that'll be in the spring. That's been okay because the guys that are doing the. The E D charging stations have been really behind on their paperwork, so. We thought we were going to have to pave and then they were going to come right through and cut it up to put the wires in for that. So that's not going to happen now. Again, it looks like they can put the charging station and then we'll do that. Um, the planning agency has started the paperwork on for uh Brownfield's go grant to clean up the land between. Uh, where the exchange building is over to River Street, what we call the Stacy property. That'll have the same contaminants as the other. Did so that'll likely be another four or five hundred thousand to clean that up, but then it'll it'll be. Grass, you know, or whatever it'll be, it'll be better. Um. They're also looking to see if perhaps there's one of the buildings in particular should be knocked down. Um, that hopefully there's some contamination, but paint or something so that we can get Brownfield's money to knock it. The paving update, well, that's the paving project, so that's essentially what happened. It's happening. We're not doing parking lot, but the rest of this stuff is happening. The bond stuff has all come through, so that part's okay. Uh, and the National Street Housing is the houses are gone. Uh, the house that the new ones are in construction, we haven't paid more than the first installment. Uh, I haven't heard anything different than um. Sometime in November, we'll see. The diner was supposed to happen sometime in August. It's, you know, things happen. So uh and we are uh. We've ordered the replacement fence, you know, for the diner used to be. So now that that's all gone, we're, that you could finish before uh winter.
Is there any other use for that old diner property that anyone interested in doing something with that? Is there a room to do anything?
WIC owns it.
Yeah, WIC owns it.
Yeah, I mean.
But.
The cross.
I'm going to say no, yeah. No, but the the WIC owns the the rest of it over over to.
Right.
Yeah, and I think they did sign a contract with uh the same architecture firm that did the apartment building to do a. Say a scoping study to see. Magnitude of scale that could fit there and magnitude of cost to build what would fit there. So we'll have something to work with.
I don't want to take up too much time and I apologize. What rent, what is the cost of renting one of those homes that we are charging people? And if you were like, I don't know yet, that has been answered yet, that's fine.
Uh, I don't know yet. Um, anecdotally, it sounds like. A little below two thousand a month is what the going rate is.
Hi, okay, that's all I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Happy, that that, I mean, there's a. Obviously, there's a scale.
Yeah.
But this is high demand, two bedrooms, new construction, so it has all the attributes. Of more rather than less. And we have started the paperwork to transfer the National Street property and the Jarvis Street House to the town from WIC.
I think it's time to sign some orders.
I make a motion to be signed orders. Second if.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote? I, I. Brian?
Oh, that's time now. We should be harmonizing. We say that or we go down the.
We should practice before. Remember like in music class?
I don't think those resolutions need your signature, but if not, we'll have a record of the vote like.
So just this one spot there.
And if they do, let us know. I can always stop down.
Well, it's it's not like the other ones where we had to have it done by a certain date. I can just bring them to the next meeting and you'll have. Uh, I can also tell you the the website. Um, the website's designed to upload agendas and minutes. Because that's the standard requirement for municipalities. So we're working with the developer to see if we can upload packets. If we don't upload the packets, I can put a link to the packets on the calendar for people in the public that want packets. And like today, it was the box link, like it's always been. So now now that we, you know, know what the parameters are. Um, I I think that was the last, you know, real glitch. There's still some tweaking needing to be done.
So I went on there. Oh, the Democratic. Yeah.
Oh, recording of that?
That would be on Windsor. Oh, it's on, okay, no wonder I did. I wanted the town website.
That was so.
I know, we're so used to seeing Paula that sometimes you just think. When did she leave?
I don't know. I was just wondering. I was like, did she disappear while we were sitting here?
Oh, she told me she had to leave and when I turned it off.
I didn't even notice.
Okay, I said, don't worry about it. Leave whenever you need to and then.
Did?
Maybe maybe she just never even came in.
No, I saw her leave.
She was, oh, Paul's going to see this because it's still recorded. Paul, I, you know, no worries. I'll refer you to whatever you ask me for.
We got it. I don't think there's public comments for items not on the agenda because there's no public. Ryan, you want to start us off with board member comment?
No, I don't really have anything. Thank you.
Sorry. Emma?
Um, I don't have a lot today. There was a very. Warm and inviting and peaceful no kings protest that happened on Main Street in Windsor this weekend. That was really nice and community based and I also got to try and explain to my four-year-old what a protest was, and that was kind of funny. Um, and people are giving out cookies and it was lovely. And yay Windsor.
I have nothing.
I have nothing. I have anything either except to say, you know, we spent all summer doing outreach to the community and it, thank you to everybody that came out and spoke to all of us. It it was really informative and enlightening. Everybody was so respectful and thoughtful with their remarks. So. Thank you, everyone, for doing that.
Absolutely.
If you're looking for more outreach, we have trunk trunk horse breed Halloween night. You know, you can have the select bar board party van out there and. Bazooka bubble gum or whatever.
In the budget?
No, sorry. It's your budget.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight ten.